Okay, it is 7 o'clock. We call the meeting to order. Please stand for petition.
The United States of America, and to the Republic, for what stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Group? All calls please, sir.
Chairman Stewart?
Here.
Fulman?
Here.
Mattley?
Here.
Goop?
Here.
Cummings?
Here.
Aik.
Here.
Does everyone have a chance to review the minutes of our last meetings of 3:00 to 8:00? If there's any corrections or additions, I'll be here if you want. I make a motion to review the minutes as presented in the third second.
Awesome.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Uh, the agenda, why is there a meeting? There was some agenda in 15 minutes.
No additions to the agenda, that would be, that would be approved as submitted.
Public comment? The record show there's all, uh... Um, public comment. Medical marijuana of the, uh, item 6A. Steve, is there anything that, uh, they're gonna, isn't the state gonna start issuing permits to?
Yeah, they granted the first permit for December 1st, for some places in the harbor. And others are gonna be issued, but not around here for my...
Not around here because everybody in this area have to know.
Not a recreational right now.
You did Lenex though?
No, no, no.
Lenex, not a recreational.
Yeah, they did.
This was a state's issue.
Yeah.
They did one, I think they did one in Calcaston.
Did it?
Yeah.
Is, is there something, uh, for Lenex, are they adjusting something?
They wanna wait and see when of their medical licenses come through prior to granting any recreational. So right now, instead of the state saying where they can locate them in Lenex, Lenex wants to have a say in it, so they opted out for the time being until they can see. They granted six last year medical licenses without a common fruition as of yet. It's been over a year. Three of them were given six month extensions last month. There's another application period that came in in August. And they're gonna be issuing probably additional licenses in December or January for four, five more. Not knowing if any of those will make it, but I mean, most of them are just, they start the money for an application, once they get approved, they realize how costly it is or how difficult it is to be. And they're just giving up, so. But I just want to see what's happening with the medical, if there's anything with recreation.
It's kind of the way I understood it. Of course, doesn't affect us at this point. The Richmond Township Parks and Recreation, uh, number 6B update.
Uh, I believe each issue has had the most recent updated copy of the Parks and Recreation master plan. It's for the most part, we're going to take exception to the action goals and wrap it in last section. And a few additional sections. Uh, just wanted you to review this, let us know if we're, or if there's anything we need by this calendar that needs to be changed. Our goal is to get this approved prior February 1st, or submitted prior February 1st. So we're also going to apply for grants on April 1st grant cycle. Then there's a 30 day public comment period. So which means that then in December or prior to the board meeting in February, we're gonna have to have this available in the township offices for review for 30 days, so we're on schedule.
So if things are going away, we hope we could be holding the, we'd be holding a public hearing on this?
The township board asked to hold a public hearing.
Not us. We will be recommending, or sending this to them. Probably in our next meeting will be January, so we...
January? Uh, we might have to have a, it needs to be before the township board meeting, that same day, but... So I don't know if they're scheduled, whether they need compared to the planning commission being set up. So we might have to adjust accordingly.
Maybe before us, maybe.
The second one.
We need the second, we need, we need...
Yes, we might have to adjust something or...
Okay, but that's where we'll be, right? If everything is in order, we'll be acting at that point.
So you don't want this on the board's agenda for next month? It needs to go on for January?
Well, I'd love to have it for information purposes, so they can make any additional comments or questions. Why it's in that public comment period, so we can be ready, and against that final meeting of the board, they had a chance to provide input, everything is, you know, we're all the same patient.
Okay.
So for information, it'd be great.
So if we wanna recommend any changes, we got about two, three weeks.
Yeah. I mean, technically, probably have it till January, but easily within two or three weeks, yes.
Okay, uh, anything else on the person, I'm going with that. Uh, number seven, new business, public hearing on Zoni ordinance. I'll probably open the public hearing and then Steve, uh, bring this up today. We did a great job, I appreciate it. A lot of work. So at, uh, 7:11 would I have here, we'll open the public hearing on the, um... The changes to our zoning ordinance. Steve, if you'd like to turn it over.
The zoning ordinance was, uh, in various sections without any, uh, let's see, consistency in terms of numbering. There are a lot of amendments that were done after the fact. So what I did is I did the zoning ordinance, basically codified it, renumbered it, placed the amendments in the proper locations, uh, and updated it just very simply. For example, the biggest update was the McCollum County Road Commission. And that's now the McCollum County Department of Roads. So I just made that type of changes. There is, it referred to the Planning Act a couple times in 1966, or something like that. And we have a planning act in 2006, and it now, so. Those are the minor changes that were made. Everything else was numbering. But because we made any changes, we recorded it in a public hearing, and we adopted it. That's it. There were no changes in any policy whatsoever. We do need to do that, but that was a part of this.
Okay, um, let's see. This was published in the paper, right, right?
Yes.
And so forth, and nobody called in under that ordinance, so, okay. There is no petition or in this case, so, uh, we can't really receive no letters or mail. Anyone in the audience at this point, and I'd like to, I can show there are, no one is here this evening. Does any of the commissioners have any questions for Steve?
I think you did read that. Just, you said here that we would have to make some changes to it.
Yeah, there are some.
Over a extended period of time, or maybe they...
Over extended period of time. For example, there's a, the biggest one that comes to mind is the sign, the signage regulations, which were stripped out by the Supreme Court a couple years ago.
What was yours?
The sign regulations. It basically says you can't regulate signs based on what it says. We got specific language for local signs and real estate signs, so we may adjust that. There's some updates in the, uh, definitions, old definitions and definitions we have to include. Uh, I think we need to look at adding a section in the ordinance on open space for PUDs, which came to light, and there's comments here, that they're trying to get the PDR approvals. Uh, you get more points if community has that. So I think these are the things we need to look at.
Sure. I really thought we had, and maybe it was a second one.
I thought we had something.
Not in, not in there.
It's in master plan.
Oh, in the master?
Oh, but it's not in there.
I didn't see it in the zoning ordinance. The county compact that we made yesterday, why they backsource from the zoning ordinance, I mean, for master plan, because they're submitting that, so I provided that to them. What does apply to the county as well?
Well, it's submitting an application to the state for purchase of people. They do have a cycle.
Or they have, they have.
But it doesn't apply anything to the zoning ordinance.
Now, the board, we're looking to hire somebody to recoup that. Do we need to do that then? You've done it to this point.
Mm-hmm.
Do we have to hire somebody else?
It's up to you. I mean, I have the, I have the expertise that Unico can, but I didn't. I could certainly put it into a format like that on the orders, I've done it and I'm doing it for cash flow adoption, right now.
Because we're submitting right now, uh, for, like, for content, you know, uh...
Yeah.
For bits, for bits.
To do what?
To do what he said needs to be done next.
For all the ordinance, all the ordinance.
Go through each one and see where we need to update it, put it all in one book, basically.
So the zoning would be chapter, whatever, of the codified licenses.
You can do, you could do that.
I'm doing it for cash flow, but that's, I mean, I'm not gonna profess that I can do the same type of publishing that Unico could do for...
Yeah, because it's not cheap.
No.
It's expensive.
I'd offer, we got people, somebody has something in mind, and they provide a proposal.
Okay.
Yeah, you, in other words, you could do it.
I can do it, yeah.
That would be, I think it's important one hand, whatever.
Oh, that's a cool thing. Did we already, we're...
She just sent out what our, they were just saying they were going out, or is it, maybe my other going out?
Just said, yeah, just, just in the process. Do it.
Okay, uh, the, uh... Any, any other questions from the previous commissioners, Steve? Otherwise, I think we need to close the public hearing, there's, uh, on the, uh... Changes that were made, which was just technically not going to be located and everything, so it's easier to find, this is certainly done.
Do we put it online now too?
It is online, or?
Yeah.
Which everybody...
I think everybody else has got this online. We're one of the few that doesn't. And our attorney said we need to do that, because a lot of times, they're in court and the judge asks something, they can simply go online and find it, so she, she was after us to kind of do that.
I'll let the record show, we closed the, uh, public hearing at, uh, 7:17. Let's see here. Item loss, 7B. Mr. Chairman? Yes, sorry.
You need to vote to, uh, recommend a proposal to the township board?
Yes, okay. And do we have? I'll make a motion that we approve the zoning ordinance as presented. Is there a second?
Awesome.
All call, please.
Sir. Cummings?
Aye.
Fulman?
Aye.
Mattley?
Aye.
Goop?
Aik?
Aye.
Chairman Stewart?
Aye. Okay. Now, uh, thanks for reminding me. It's a good thing to hold. Number 7B, the clerk asked me if we would bring this up to discuss that medical building, that 32 model. We're getting interest, and of course, the realtors have been, and the people that are interested to come in on occasion, wanting to know what they can do. Well, we do tell them, it's old office slash C1. And the, I'm sorry, it's still office, the master plan is office C1. So the thought was, well, if it's not gonna be good for an office or a medical building, because apparently, uh, we have two of new, relatively new ones in town, and that's where everyone goes, then what, what should this be used for? And, uh, the thought was, some people have talked about C1. Maybe, for instance, it was brought up once that the Lenox Township is putting in a, uh, campground across the street, and maybe, maybe somebody would wanna have a, uh, party store there, or some, you know, a dollar store, or something like that, to, for these people in Lenex would gain, or a VIP lot, or whatever, and, you know, things that they need to buy, you know. So that, it just, what do we know?
Is that zone by special land use back in the day when that thing was built?
Well, not special land use, I think, it was just, it was, it changed to office, because they were building that. There's a, if you look at the zoning act, there's those like...
That's where.
In the areas for that, so it just extended it, in a, really a lesser way than some of the other things that are there. And, uh...
There should be agriculture at that time?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Certainly.
Uh, geez, I went there for a doctor probably 20 years ago, so it's been operating there 25 years, I don't know, something like that. But I think it seems reasonable. Uh, well, Steve, what's your thoughts there?
It makes sense, it's, you, you have that provision now that you can rezone conditionally, so.
And my kid, what's gonna be there?
My kid, what's gonna be there? I'm asking, you should be in for it at all. And I can ask her, she'll be at, but, uh, so if somebody came in, who could say, yeah, the township might consider commercial depending on the texture of Houston, you should submit that. So that would work that way. That would keep you from getting this rezoning, they take commercial, they can use car lot, or, you know, or whatever.
And, you know, people that cannot know even the zoning, that, oh, I could put a, some kind of metal shop in there, say. No, you can't, you know, that doesn't, it's forced. Commercial, which are very close to the office, and one medical, seems to me that somebody needs to bring something else, instead of us suggesting. No, no, well, I, you know, I don't think that you're saying that. If they've got something they feel is economically viable, and it's consistent with our master plan.
We're not trying to be long, but...
No, no, what, I guess what she was mentioning, and we wouldn't, we wouldn't, I don't think, she didn't want us to suggest what they could put there, just that they do have more options, because telling them that it is master plan for a commercial and office, that's a reason to do their job now, or what they want. We give them a copy of what is in C1 and what's allowed in C1. It obviously says it was an office, if Lenox Township is doing something across the road, it might change the character there a little bit. We need to be flexible. Let things economically develop, so I don't think we have much commercial in the township. No, we don't have much.
So, check that, we don't have to do anything, she just kind of wanted our opinion.
Yeah, what, because...
People come in after, you can at least say...
Say, hey, here, it's, here's what's best to...
See, so they could come together and say, this is what we're thinking.
Yeah, and then go from there, you know, we could always go to a professional planner. Gas station, no, probably not a gas station, that's a little bit of intense use. But maybe a party store and, and something like that would make sense and fit. I have a review of C1, but it's kind of restricted, I don't know what you could put, so. Any other thoughts? I don't think you usually have a couple of thoughts.
Well, uh, just wanted to make mention of a gas station being more intense. Or if they started out with a convenience store, the next thing they'd be asking for is, well, let's pump gas too.
But like he, like Steve says, you, you can have, uh, what do they, what do they call it now?
Conditional zoning.
Conditional zoning, and there was another name for it that they had.
Or it used to be contract zoning.
Contract zoning, conditional zoning, where they, we could agree on with them what they can handle, period. You know, if you wanna have a party store, that's what you would, alcohol sales, I guess, you could do that, maybe, as a restriction.
Because office one, now, so...
Yes.
Um, if they want to have a convenience store or something like that, it's gonna have to be rezoned or special land use, or?
No, no, it would be rezoned.
Would be rezoned?
It would be rezoned. To C1, if that's what the, if...
If it goes through.
If it went through, yeah.
But it's master planned.
It's, it is master planned for, for office slash C1.
Okay.
Which are quite, yeah, a little bit comparable, because there's a business there, so. C1 is usually a local commercial. Yes. Shouldn't say change or something. Something the neighborhood could use.
Okay.
Zone goes up.
If it goes up to a party store, it's gonna go to, it has to go to...
I'm not sure, it might be, because it's a little... Walk to a what?
Like it goes up to a party store, gas station, whatever, the zoning's gonna have to go up on C1 for office.
Oh, yeah, no, no, I, uh, you can, I think, I don't know, Steve, in the C1 is, uh, a party store allowed?
Usually. Yeah, C1 is usually your, like, neighborhood convenience, so it's typically a party store.
Yeah.
Personal bar shops.
No, you can, you can, a gas station or any of that.
That's usually a...
This is a local convenience, is what, C1 is pretty restricted. And then, and then, this is just, we got, nobody's applied for anything, so. Uh, I understand, certainly, but my concern is...
Yes, I understand. You're waiting. I don't like the light pollution.
You don't like the light pollution? Oh, no, no, that, that's right.
Yeah.
But we would be able to control that and put in restrictions, Steve, is that correct? Out of conditional zoning.
I understand, I just asked him.
No, but you see what I'm saying, I think there could be a lot of protection for, for around, surround the area by the, by the township.
I'm thinking the January, or the relative, or the...
Well, it would be kind of like a special land.
It really would, just you tie it to the zoning.
Yeah. That was my question.
Yeah.
Curious of that.
Because you're gonna, you could put some stipulations out.
Right, yeah.
But it also allows them to come before us and say, this is what I do. Yeah. It gives the landlord, now, a little more, like, a little bit of stuff.
Because, obviously, you're probably consumed by them.
Oh, yeah.
You know, I mean, if we can't be reasonable, and I'm not saying that, I'm not saying that there would be a party store, I don't... Some little, you know, uh, antique store, I don't know, but that's...
It's not, it's just, I'm just saying.
The supervisor and the clerk thought that it would be nice if we discussed it to see, you know, more rad, and I think we know more rad. It, uh, the master plan does allow for C1 there, and, uh, depending on what, when, and how, and what the restrictions are, it gives us a lot of leitages for, as the township planning commission and the board to, to keep a handle. Because once, uh, conditional zoning, as I understand it, enters basically a contract with the person that's gonna operate it, and that's what they can do there, period, once you agree, right, Steve?
Especially goes with the land.
Goes with the land. So if they sell it down the road, that's what their requirements are.
Kind of set the tone for the day.
Oh, sure.
Yeah.
Chairman Stewart?
Yes.
How long has that building been vacant?
Uh, maybe three years, two years, or more.
Well, I think it's been more than that.
More than that?
I would say. Yeah, but how long has every quarter, that's what's in there, they just moved out of it. It wasn't down, but they put the ID over it.
Well, maybe, there was maybe under construction down there and so forth, and then...
Because that's what moved out of it. Yes, it's been a while. Yeah.
Any other thoughts on the site? So we can report back, uh... So the clerk can see what I'm saying, or find the clerk, any...
Yeah.
Okay, uh... You're not here? Uh, I'm sorry, uh, new business, uh, nationwide construction, they're turning their sign, do they have to be here? I think so, because... They have to be here? What did you...
There's no rules that say, oh, it's a policy.
I thought they were gonna be here, what, you reviewed that then?
I reviewed it, yeah, the lease orders, it doesn't matter, problem.
It's not a problem. Locations and everything.
Location, like, area.
There's some, well, there, yeah, it does, so, really, unless there's, uh, some, uh, discussion on it, or questions on it, in C ordinance, they're entitled to sign, and they're, they're good, you know, they're good neighbors.
They come to Brazil, you know?
Yeah. Really, they're good neighbors. When is the beer party? Are we not gonna get invited?
No.
I think they, uh, and they do have to, for all signs, industrial signs have to come through, so. I'll make a motion to review the order to approve their application as submitted.
I'll make that motion.
Second? Second. All call, please.
Mattley?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Goop?
Aye.
Fulman?
Aye.
Chairman Stewart?
Yes. Aye. Number 7D, are meeting dates and submission dates until this year?
Yep.
Okay, and we're, and the dates are starting to jam and do our area of month on the meeting. And then you, is it the same, uh, submission?
Yes, it's probably 30 days on the submission date.
If there are no, yes, I'm just gonna ask if you needed a motion. Yes, I did. If there's no other questions or problems with our submission dates and meeting dates, it would be a motion, it would be in order, Harold, to... I'll, I'll move to approve the planning commission meeting and submission dates for 2020, for 2020, as was that a year? Is there a second?
I'll support it.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Um, public comment? The record show there's one here. More left date for it?
Uh, just that we're putting out the bench for that recalcification. Cindy has been talking to the county, the road commissioner, about the, I guess, public work job. About hidden metals, and we've been constantly having complaints about the roads over there.
So... Ashmalt breaking up?
Yeah, and stuff, so, and there's been a... So, and there's been a, they looked into the records and they see there was a county allowed that in there, where they allow some stuff they shouldn't have.
Are those public roads or
Uh, yeah.
Public roads.
Yeah. So the county's kind of admitting their mistakes, so they might be helping us kind of straighten that out over there. And they might even be blacktopping Powell Road down, Weeks Road down to that subdivision and into their
Those are the tracks.
Yeah, so, but that's all
Yeah, they still
Yeah, but that's one thing that Cindy's been working a lot on now. Other than that, I think that should
Let's see. Mr. Laidius, items anyone wants to bring up? Just, if I understood Steve correctly, then we can expect a special meeting date between now and the township board meeting. Would we need a special date or change the, from a regular meeting date?
We'd need you to be a week or so before the, or even the same night prior to the board meeting.
And this would be probably in January, February?
Definitely would have to be, usually January, because it has to be received by February first.
Okay, January. Until move, to move our date up a week? Just saying, we decided we should do something like that. Just need a posting on the door, you need a posting in the newspaper?
I love the posted in the newspaper.
Change that.
Posted the door.
Posted the door, that's what I told you. So that would be an easy squeeze deal, whatever. Twelve people, you make the voice of this out. So do we need to do that tonight?
We could, because We're not going to wait, Mason. We're not going to board meeting that month. So the board meeting is one night?
It's the seventh Wednesday.
Second Wednesday?
Seventh Wednesday of January. January eighth.
So the first Wednesday is January first, so that's not going to Can you make a date, like a half hour prior? What, again, six thirty or something?
So what, at that meeting, what do we need to do?
Approve the, recommend the red plans at the township board.
Oh, okay, the new red plan.
But if we do like Monday night?
Would it help you if we did it in December? Would that make, give you more time or impact for you?
Yeah, that would help too. I mean, then we could do that too.
If we just did it before the December meeting?
Yeah.
You know, a half hour before, that's all we're going to do.
Well, a half hour?
Would be six thirty.
That'd be the eleventh? Well, that's all, I'm thinking of, that's our red board meeting in January. If we got other business on
But I mean
We can't get that
Couldn't we just do that and then still have our red board meeting in January?
Yeah. You just posted it on
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
And still have our January.
You forget, everything I'm thinking is, it might get the perception to evolve, we're not the same zone because it's going to be a thirty day review period.
Probably right there.
Yeah. We might want to be closer to the board meeting.
So if the board, if the board meeting is Wednesday
Monday.
Eleven, so we could do it on a Monday?
Monday or Tuesday or something. Yeah, we probably should put it that way.
And that's, there would then be a red
Red board meeting.
We had other stuff on the agenda, we could take care of that. That time, we're not working into the board meeting.
Yeah.
So we, we need a motion to change our January
Figure out a date to your first. Second Wednesday, January.
So we want to go December or January?
January.
January.
So the board meeting is on the eighth of January?
So the seventh or the sixth. Sixth.
This would be Monday and that's
At regular times?
Yeah, with the separate meeting, just move it to the sixth from the fifteenth.
Do we need to do that?
It would be nice if we did it now.
Yeah, it would.
We need a motion to do that, probably?
Well, could we make the motion to accept these and would that change?
Yes.
Okay. I made the motion that we accept the meeting dates for 2020 with the change of the January meeting to January sixth from the fifteenth.
And the, she's also got the submission.
Submissions, oh, and also the submission dates. For site plan, special land use, we need only submission dates.
Did, Harold? Yes, did we vote on this already?
Yes.
Would you?
Okay, so this is going to have to be amended. So we had to just change that one day.
Yeah.
amend the motion.
I made the motion to amend
amend.
The original motion, to change the date from January fifteenth to January sixth.
And did we say the same time?
Yes, that, sorry.
The township, I'm second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Who would have been Our township planner on number twenty-one, I'll make him report. Thank you. Any other thoughts or questions by any of the commissioners? Okay, a motion would be in order to adjourn the same date that, since they're forty. So, is there a second?
Support.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? I should carry.